Good afternoon and welcome to City Council meeting for Tuesday, March the 12th. We'll start with a roll call first, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Counselor Carlson.
Present.
Counselor Croson.
Present.
Counselor Dodick.
Present.
Counselor Palladino.
Present.
Counselor Parker.
Counselor Schmidt-Rempel.
Here.
Acting Mayor Middleton Hope.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Campbell.
Present.
And Mayor Higgin.
Present.
Thank you all, present.
All right, the city of Lethbridge acknowledges that we're gathered on the lands of the Blackfoot people of the Canadian Plains and pays respect to the Blackfoot people, past, present, and future, while recognizing and respecting their cultural heritage, heritage, beliefs, and relationships to the land. The city of Lethbridge is also home to the Métis Nation of Alberta. Let's start off with recognitions to my far right, Acting Mayor Middleton Hope.
Thank you, your worship, and I actually do have a few today. First, I'd like to commend the young conservatives at the University of Lethbridge. We had another coffee with council with about fifteen or sixteen students. They invited myself and all council members, but the mayor and I attended and we were invited to the zoo on campus for a very engaging discussion with a number of very bright young people, and I think our future is very, very bright indeed. Second, I'd like to compliment both London Drugs and Savon Foods on the north side. They have taken to locking up their shopping carts. This was an important discussion that we as a council had over two years ago in regards to shopping carts and regulating them, and they've made a decision on their own to lock those shopping carts up and require people to use a dollar coin to access them. This will reduce the theft of those pieces of property that are valued at in excess of $750 apiece. Third is to all the passionate citizens that are in the audience today, for and against bike lanes. This is very helpful to council and to administration. We appreciate you taking time out of your day for coming here, and regardless of what the outcome is, this is democracy in action, and we appreciate you attending today. Lastly, I would like to also compliment a colleague of mine who is retired Chief Superintendent Glenn Mickelson from the Lethbridge Police Service. Glenn hits one hundred years old today, and I'll be meeting with he and his family later on to celebrate that event. There is also another event at Norbridge Senior Center on Thursday at nine thirty, and members of council are certainly invited and members of the commission are invited to attend and wish Glenn well for his hundredth birthday. Thank you.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Counselor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor. I know many of us will probably wish to speak to this, but I just want to pass on my condolences to the family, friends, and colleagues of Linda Erickson. It has hit all of us very hard. I know for myself, whenever there was a question about how do I do this, who do I talk to, Linda was one of the first people that you would pick up the phone and call. She was force of nature, kindness itself, and will be greatly missed, so I had to make mention of that. On more positive note, last week, of course, the Southern Alberta Collegiate Institute at the college invited several of us on tours to go through, to see the work that they're doing with high school students and the work that's happening there. Some incredible sites and some programs happening at the college that was very nice to be able to see. And again, congratulations to everybody who was inducted into the YWCA Women of Distinction to Mandy and Cameron and Dawn and Trudy. It was an incredible event last Friday night, and some four very incredibly deserving women who now are members of the Women of Distinction.
Thank you, Counselor Croson. Counselor Palladino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure who else took part of this, but I took the time to attend Ag Expo last week, I guess two weeks ago now. I would say all is well in agriculture, especially in value-added and the tech sectors, many other related businesses in southern Alberta. I took the time to ask a few exhibitors what they thought about the venue, of course. They all agreed it was pretty spectacular, and I also couldn't help but notice a number of out-of-town and out-of-province license plates, pickup trucks mostly, many from Montana and Saskatchewan and the Hutterite colonies in between. So I haven't seen any numbers or figures on it, but it must have been a huge success, so kudos to those organizers. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Palladino. Counselor Parker.
Nothing to add, actually, Mr. Worship.
All right. To my far left, Counselor Dodick. Right, Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to acknowledge the University of Lethbridge is putting on Jesus Christ Superstar opening tonight, and especially want to shout out to our manager of Arts and Culture, the amazing Gillian Bracken, who is taking on the role, this is very unique, taking on the role of Judas, which is quite spectacular. She's going to be amazing, so it's on tonight until Saturday of U of L. Thank you.
Excellent. Counselor Carlson.
Mine have all been covered. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Schmidt-Rempel.
Thank you very much, and I certainly do also echo the condolences to Linda Erickson's family for her passing. She was a great woman, and I learned a lot from her. She was a great mentor to me. Thank you to the Lethbridge Chamber of Commerce for hosting its annual International Day Women's Breakfast, and a special shout-out to my friend Melody Garner-Skeba from Rocking Horns Ranch for sharing her story at that event, and I'm looking forward to the Women's Day Conference tomorrow at the University of Lethbridge. And I'd also like to extend a welcome to the students of the University of Lethbridge's Political Science 3210 class. Thank you for joining us today, and thank you for having me in your class yesterday.
Thank you, Counselor Schmidt-Rempel. Most has been covered. I did want to mention the International Women's Day, and especially do a shout-out to my colleagues that are here, Counselor Croson and Counselor Schmidt-Rempel, for the services you do for the community. Thank you very much. Second off, I had the opportunity of attending Budget in Edmonton here last week, and it's been almost two weeks, I guess. Gosh, time's flying. And one of the big notes, I thought it was going to actually be ejected from the building as they announced the $43 million physician training program for the university, and I clapped, and it's something you cannot do. In legislature, I found out, and I was almost ushered out, but I couldn't contain my excitement for that announcement, and look forward to what that has to bring in the future. Have a resolution here from Acting Mayor Middleton Hope. Adoption of agenda, be resolved the agenda of the regular meeting of City Council on March 12th, 2024 be adopted as presented, and I do have a question from Madam City Clerk. Six, we do have, I'm sure that majority of the crowd here is not here for six point one or six point two. I could be wrong, but I believe it's six point three. So if we can move six point three forward to six point one and shuffle them down, I don't know if any of my colleagues have any issue with that, just so we can address that first with those that are in attendance.
Cycle it through.
Is that all right? Cycle it through.
It's dependent by your address, too.
And that's the mover? That's right? Okay. So are there any other changes to the agenda, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, your worship, we do have one verbal item that needs to be added to the agenda. It's a joint intermunicipal meeting update, and it's verbal. It will be 14-2 under confidential reports. Thank you.
All right, with that, Acting Mayor Middleton Hope.
Thank you, then I'll call the question on the amended version.
Question's been called, all in favor, and that's unanimous. Next, I have a resolution from Deputy Mayor Campbell. The consent agenda be resolved at the minutes of the following meeting of City Council be approved, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the same City Council meeting from 2024-02-27. Further be resolved, the City Council receive the information of the status of directed resolutions for 2024-03-12. Be it resolved that City Council approve the recommendations contained within the following standing policy committee reports. 4.4.1, Recommendation of Governance SPC 2023 Electric Utility Alberta's Utilities Commission Compliance Report. Be it resolved, the City Council approve the submission of the City of Lethbridge Code of Conduct Regulation 2023 Annual Compliance Report as provided in Attachment 1 to the Alberta Utilities Commission, the AUC. 4.4.2, Recommendation of Governance Standing Policy Committee Bylaw 6440 Reconciliation Lethbridge Advisory Committee Bylaw. Be it resolved, the City Council, number one, give first reading to Bylaw 6440 on March 12th, 2024, and number two, consider second and third reading of Bylaw 6440 on March 26th, 2024. Further be resolved, the City Council provide first reading to the following bylaw, Bylaw 6441 Land Use Bylaw Amendment Regarding 1730 10th Avenue South. And further be resolved, the City Council direct administration to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 9th, 2024 at 3:00 p.m. for the following bylaw, 6441 Land Use Bylaw Amendment Regarding 1730 10th Avenue South. Deputy Mayor Campbell.
I see there are some questions.
All right. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and sorry I didn't read through the draft motion before it was brought up. Is the numbering incorrect? When I was following along, it didn't match with the agenda, like it's 4.4.1, 4.4.2, but it should be 4.3.1, 4.3.2, or did I miss any change to the agenda?
Wow, that was very good. I do see that. 4.3.1. 4.4.1. Yeah, 4.3. So 4.4.1 should read 4.3.1, thank you, and 4.4.2 should read 4.3.2.
It's very minor.
Very minor, no, but thank you for that. All right. With that, any further questions? If not, Deputy Mayor.
And if anybody else wants to pull anything from the agenda, I see not, I will call for the vote.
Question's been called, all in favor, and that's unanimous. I have a resolution here, 6.3, which has moved to 6.1, I guess.
It's 6.3.
It's 6.3 just brought forward sooner. All right. Well, we're all ready before I read it. Counselor Dodick.
... upsetting this story. The operative clause is the only thing that's important in terms of the resolution. It's a long resolution, so I would propose that only the operative clauses be read.
All right. You don't want all your blambo prior, no?
It doesn't matter. You want to read it. You want to read it.
All right, no, I can read the operative clause. That is just perfect. So, all right, any further questions before reading? All right, it says now therefore be it resolved. Start there, Counselor Dodick is fine, all right. City Council direct administration to cease planning and construction of any and all bicycle paths and lanes that have not yet been built in the downtown between Second Avenue South and Sixth Avenue South, and between Stafford Drive South and Scenic Drive South. Provide an estimate of the cost of removing all bicycle paths and lanes in the downtown business area, including all pylons, and any or any and all concrete barriers and signage, and report back to the Economic SPC no later than Q2 2024. And once the costs referred to in Item 2 above have been established, that the issue of downtown bicycle paths and lanes be referred to the Assets and Infrastructure SPC for public input and consideration, and that the BRZ, as well as all downtown businesses and any other parties that may be affected, be provided notice of the date and time when the assets and infrastructure at SPC will meet to address, among other questions. A, should there be dedicated bike paths and lanes in the downtown area? B, if the consensus is no, what should be done with the current bicycle paths and lanes? C, if the consensus is yes, should the current bicycle paths and lanes be retained, or should they take a different form example, painted lines, as was done on 13th Street North? Or D, other issues that may arise or be raised at the SPC meeting? And number four, report back to City Council no later than Q3 2024 after the meeting referred to in Item 3 has been concluded. So I'll entertain questions, and I do have in the queue, start off with Deputy Mayor Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to get in some kind of context, and I imagine I will direct this to Mr. Sanchez about, just to give a little bit of historical context as to how we got here, the kind of consultation that went into the cycling master plan that's been going on, I believe, since it was one council, our council, that I was in, okayed it in 2017. What has happened since then? What other sort of consultation has gone into it? Who has been consulted? And if we can just take it from there.
Yes, good afternoon, counsel, and thanks you for the question. I will try to do a quick summary on the process from when the cycling master plan was approved or adopted by council on July 17, 2017. During that process, council approved the cycling master plan, and that master plan, as any other master plan, has a multiple series of projects that were going to be recommended and brought back to council for approval as they were happening, with being the cycling in downtown between Fourth Avenue South and Seventh Street South, the first one of these projects. That was engaged, we completed an engagement on that particular project. There was a cycling corridor functional planning engagement that was done between 2018-19, and by the end of 2019, it was finished, the engagement process. We had over 1,400 participants or feedback for this engagement that we did in terms of cycling in the downtown between Fourth Avenue and Seventh Street. This included all the different stakeholders, the BRZ, community groups. We had a mind mixer online forum, and we also had the Get Involved website available for residents and all the stakeholders to provide their feedback. Once we collected all the information, we came back, or administration came back to council to have the functional planning study adopted, and that was completed on April 6 of 2020. At that time, the functional planning included all the bike lanes and the work that was going to happen in the downtown area. After that process, it went into the CAP, and it was originally done as part of the CAPC6, which included all the biking lanes and the pathways across the city. Later, the administration did an application for an active transportation fund grant, which we received, and that was $3 million that...
Good to see you, Mark. Bless you all. I'm waiting to find out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Bless you all.
Thank you. Can you continue, Mr. Sanchez? Thank you.
Yep. That process, we came back to City Council and presented the results of that application to the grant, and we needed to amend C6 in order to incorporate the funding that was received. At that time, one of the requirements from the grant was to have a motion from City Council to have a matching fund in order to be eligible to get the grant application. That all was completed on November 8th, 2022, where the CAPs were amended to include $1.2 million to the bike lanes, and the reminder of the funds for a total of $3 million were used for a pedestrian bridge design and the pathway design that is happening in between the city and Caldwell, the city section of the work that is going to happen. After that amendment, the project started in 2023 and was completed last year. We completed this project by the end of the season, late in October was when the project was fully completed.
Just, okay, so obviously, there's been issues with the bike lanes downtown, and I suspect you're aware of them. Now, there's always an opportunity to correct the problems that are, and are you continuing on with consultation, figuring out how to fix the issues that we have right now?
Yes, I will start the question, and I will probably see if Mr. Jewell, who is also here, and Mr. Brahman, who are here with us today, can expand on any additional details. I know after the project was finished, our team has been in constant communication with both the BRZ, downtown business, and all the users in terms of changes or modifications that need to happen, and I know they have completed quite a few to date. And again, this is the first one, dedicated cycling path or lanes that we have. We are going through the process, and any other modifications that will be required will be implemented, but I will let Mr. Jewell add anything else, if there is anything else.
Thank you, and I will ask Mr. Brahman to come up here, who is our accessibility guru expert, to fill us in on the adjustments made. Basically, this has been open since the end of October, very short timeframe. We're learning a lot of lessons, both on operations and maintenance, and also on the adjustments of the accessibility, the blocks or the four-inch curbs that were put in. So I was here in January, if I remember, and we responded to a lot of operational questions, and I'm going to try to deal with the snow and ice control, improvements we've made since then, because back then, it's not very often we get a one-foot snow dump all in one day or two-day period. That was an extreme amount. We weren't ready for that. We've since, early February, middle of February, we rented, we couldn't buy it, but we have rented a new piece of equipment, which is basically a C70, a 1.2-meter-wide tractor with a broom, and so if you've been up at 4:00, 5:00 in the morning, or whatever time they're doing that removal, it's way better. Every snowfall now, within 24 to 48 to 72 hours, they're brooming that surface off. That tractor has a blade on it, and also a bucket on it, and a sander in the back. So it's now improving the snow and ice control that is one of the concerns in the winter operation, because even during winter, we're always getting cyclists, even in the winter, cycling on that, that don't want to be impeded. So I initially had thought we're going to match the service level of the roadway. That was my bad assumption. We have to raise that service level to be more like closer to a sidewalk, not the same within 24 hours of a sidewalk removal, but we're upping the service level for snow and ice control on the bike lanes. The other, since January, I wanted to ask Mr. Brahman to come up and describe the improvements we've made from public inquiries on accessibility improvements, and he is our, I'm going to call him our eight-to-eighty accessibility guru, so he can talk about the improvements we've made since we've done the initial construction. Mr. Brahman, please.
I think, once, the first month when a lot of the blocks went in, right away, we started noticing that, you know, it's kind of an obstacle, and actually, we have a lot of formal accessibility stalls, but I think what happened with the blocks is it took kind of the informal access away, some of it, because of that. And so we had one call, I think, by a medical center just east of the post, and this lady phoned in and said, you know, I have trouble, you know, getting to my appointment, and we actually took one block out at that time, and I think in October, and we got a call back a few days later, a week later, and said, that's my new number-one spot. I just got to get there early so I can, you know, have better access, you know, to the medical center. And so I think after the first snow, we started... And so I think after the first snow, we started, and every day, we would actually walk it, ride it, you know, look at it, and one of the things that happened was, we noticed that, you know, people are still having a bit of trouble. And, now it's too high. And, and so what we did was, I think, I think in January, I'm going to guess, or maybe early February, when we had that nice dry spell, a few of us walked the whole site again, and I had a spray can, and I said, okay, let's start taking a few blocks out and making it more accessible, yet still making sure that we had enough blocks to have a protected cycle track. As Darwin mentioned, and I apologize, but the last five, 10 years, having grandchildren, I understand, you know, what a protected lane is, and there's only one time I went down a pathway that was too close to the road, and I went, I'm supposed to understand that, know that? So that 8 to 80 is real, just because, you know, my lived experience with my grandkids, and I told somebody, you know, the painted line is nice, that's for somebody, but for us, in my little network of people and kids, protection, right, between, you know, the cyclists and pedestrians and motorists is important. And so anyway, we went, I think we took 32 blocks out, so we probably went two, two or four blocks each side, every block, just to make sure that there was enough, but not two in a row, that, say, a vehicle could still get in and hit somebody. And I think there's still room for some more to be taken out and still not take away from the protect, you know, protection of the cycle track.
All right. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'll be fairly brief, I think. First question to the mover. I'm just looking at the, the order of action in your actionable clauses, and I'm just wondering if we're just putting cart before the horse, or is to try and ask, which you know I'm not a fan of asking our administration to do a bunch of work at times when I think they're all running flat out. And it seems to do a lot of work before we actually get public input. We've got a lot of the public here today, and city council doesn't take any public comments, although I appreciate the hundreds of emails that I got to read over the weekend, so thank you for that. So I'm just wondering why this is brought here to direct administration to do a bunch of pre-work, rather than going out to the community first and actually asking for their input?
I'm not, excuse me, I'm not sure what your question really is.
The question is, why wouldn't this go to an SPC where the public can actually comment and bring feedback before we say to our administration, go out and do cost estimates and find out how much grant money we have to return and how much?
All right, let me answer that question with a question myself. I had asked of administration on March 2 to give me an idea of what grants were involved and what were specifically dedicated for this project, and it was absolutely cricket. So today, I find out that some money has been allocated from a grant, so it catches me by surprise, and it seems a lot like, the last question and answer seemed like choir practice to me, and I did not appreciate that. So it felt like a lot of assistance that was being sought has turned into resistance. So I don't disagree with what you're saying, and that's what the purpose of the resolution was, was to go out to the public. The people that I talked to actually told me, said, why didn't you just bring a resolution and have them completely removed now? So what I was trying to do is saying, as you can see, the change was made in item number one, because I wasn't quite clear, obviously, it was very unclear, that it was the downtown area that I was most concerned with. So you see, it's between Second and Sixth Avenue South and Stafford Drive and Scenic Drive South. So what I'm doing is trying to say, look, don't do anything more in the downtown area, and, yeah, I don't care whether the estimate of costs is provided at the same time as item number three. It could be there, two could be sub E, which basically says, provide an estimate of the costs at the, at the SPC, assets infrastructure, SPC, don't matter to me. But I didn't think that it was going to take long to analyze the costs. What we're talking about is, they've removed a few concrete blocks which are pinned in, a little bit of signage, so basically, what the resolution did was really not do anything in terms of the actual downtown bicycle lanes till the end of, or just September 30 of 2024, when all of those things have been done. To me, it doesn't matter if, if you want to say that provide an estimate of the cost of removing blah, 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 I can move that to A, and everything else becomes B, C, D. Doesn't matter to me. The point of this resolution was to have a true public consultation, not, and I will be talking to it about my debate as to why we have so many members of the audience that are here today, and it is strictly a function of social media and a call to arms by very specific people, and I will make reference to that. Okay?
Thank you. For that, your second question is basically about the, the question of all bicycle paths and bike lanes.
In the downtown area.
There are very different iterations, one, or implementations, one that I think Mr. Jewell and Mr. Brahman were talking about, where the separated ones with the raised curb that was able to be unpinned. There are others that are raised to the sidewalk level that are part of this, like, there's a wide range, right next to the post office.
Okay.
As a cyclist, I've used them, and so there's very different types. Is this just, and so I was confused, is this just for the ones, the only ones that we've actually had any complaints that have been addressed?
No, no, all of the downtown ones.
All, even the ones that aren't causing any issue or have not raised any concerns in the community?
Well, how do you know it has not caused any issue?
I haven't heard of any. The only one I've heard of is the pinned one, so that's just my anecdotal evidence.
All right. And like I said, my anecdotal evidence is that the people I've talked to said, just remove them all. And so all I was doing is, to cease planning for anything in the downtown area, okay? Then to provide an estimate of the costs, and then, once the costs, then go to assets and infrastructure. But do you want to make a proposal, an amendment, that item two be added to item three?
I don't have a proposed amendment at this moment. Thank you.
Okay, well, I could do it for you. So what it would read is that, where it says, on item three, it says, among other questions, as an E, would be, provide an estimate of the cost of removing all bicycle path and lanes in the downtown business area, including all pylons and any and all concrete barriers and signage, period.
So we've removed, at three, we've removed, once the costs referred to in item two have been established, so we just start that the issue of, oh, I'm not on, oh, I am, that the issue, you'd have to remove that just the first before the column, I believe. So three, that the issue of downtown bicycle paths be referred to.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying. Okay, and so you also take the, you say, you're right. So three would then have the words, let's go back, start at?
That the issue of?
The issue, so up to the word "that" is gone.
Perfect. Thank you. That makes sense.
Okay. All right. So effectively, then, I'm talking about all downtown bicycle paths, put a pause on them, refer it to the assets and infrastructure SPC to consider, among other things, all the items referred to there, A through E, and then report back to council no later than September 30 of 2024. So that gives the current bicycle paths a life to no later than September 30 of 2024. So it would be at that time that council would decide what they would do with this information. So for example, if we got businesses and other stakeholders, 50% plus one say, we like them, council may still say, don't care, we're not changing their mind, but at least it gives you an idea of what the downtown businesses want. And the reason for that is that what you see in a drawing or a depiction on a master plan can be quite different than what reality is, and a good example is Seventh Avenue South, where the roundabouts were supposed to have nice shrubbery and make it look very attractive, and instead, we have those ugly signs.
Thank you. Thank you for that. The final question I have, Mr. Mayor, if I can, would the mover at all consider, before I make a formal amendment possible, to instead of Q2 2024, where all this is sort of planned, and Q3 2024, to putting it out at least another eight months, so that we've at least have a cycling season? So basically, it would, instead of doing it?
I think, I think with us debating, if we, instead of questions, if?
Are we changing? Is your question?
Before we get the questions on the resolution, and then?
Sure. Sorry.
Come in.
Sorry.
Sorry. I was thinking you're doing a friendly right away, so it wouldn't have made any difference, but it was going where we're crafting along the way. That's all right. What about for some questions? We will come back. Counselor Carlson, Sir Dorick, to continue with this. I like where it was going, but let's have some questions on the resolution. Quickly, I do have one, I see that, that have not yet been built between Second Avenue South, Sixth Avenue South, between Stafford Drive and Scenic Drive South, the change since previously. For administration, through this, Mr. City Manager, what is left of that, and what are the dollars that are still involved with that pause?
Yes, thank you for the question. We still have left on the project that was started last year, there is a portion that is left between Seventh Street and Fifth and Sixth Avenue, and the cost for that work is $350,000. That was already awarded to the same contractor that did the work last year, but because of the season ended, we couldn't finish. So there are plan at this point to start the work in April, and it's going to take then maybe four weeks, five weeks, to complete that work for $350,000.
So they're, they've been paid already for the work?
No, the contract has been awarded, and that's the only section that is left, and after they complete that work, they will be paid for that work. But it's part of the award that we did with the RFP.
It's part of the full contract, so to pause that, what is, maybe I'll turn to Mr. Lowen, if we were to pause this right now, what's, what does that do as far as the, a contract that is partially complete with still outstanding, do they just wait with a pause as well, or is that possible?
To know for sure, I'd have to review that precise contract, but we'd be at risk certainly of having to pay the full value if we paused it without getting the services, potentially.
But is that the only paused part, then? I'll go back, Mr. Sanchez, that's the only paused part that you would see within the bolded part there? That is just what's already been prepaid?
On the current work that we have approved, and there is an RFP awarded, that's the only section that is left for the work that we started last year.
Okay, let's go beyond that. What has not been in that area awarded, what is the budget for that amount, or for that, for that area?
No, there is nothing else in that area that we're discussing, only that is what is left.
This is all that's left?
Yes.
To complete that whole, what's bolded in there, that is all that's left?
That's correct.
All right. And, and a second question I have is, cycling master plan, going back a few years, what is the total cost of the build-out of this, of the cycling master plan, again?
I will need to go back to the, to the project list and come back. I can bring that in a few minutes.
Yeah, so if I leave that, as well as how much has been spent till today, what is left through that whole cycling master plan, if you please could. Turn the time over to Counselor Carlson.
Wait till Mr. Sanchez is. So, Mr. Sanchez, I'm sure you're hearing some of the same concerns we're hearing. You and Mr. Brahman talked a little bit about snow removal and accessibility, but one of the other concerns we're hearing is about lost parking. I know when we moved the bus barns, we gained some parking there, so there's been a give and take downtown. Overall, are we up or down on parking over the last few years?
So, again, thanks for the question. To answer that, I will say that parking around downtown is reduced around 30 to 40 stalls in the whole downtown area with this project. But with that being said, there are options that are available with the park and ride. The park and ride, we know, that was part of the work as well. We want to encourage that we have a mix between the options that are available for cycling and parking, and that reduction in the parking by the businesses on the street parking is being compensated with parking space that is in the park and ride and other parking lots that are across downtown overall. So again, going back to this, to the other modifications that were completed, is that we are now having dedicated parking stalls with people with disability. They take a little bit more space in order to accommodate the safety for them, and that also play a role in the amount of parking stalls that were reduced overall.
So overall, it's similar, it's just not in the same place as people remembered?
That's correct. If you consider, on-street parking is less, but overall, in the downtown area, we have a similar number of parking stalls, if you include the park and ride and other office street parking lots.
Okay. One of the other concerns I've had from many people is, especially if you don't come down very often, all of a sudden, there's this new infrastructure, and you go, I don't know what to do. I don't know where, if I can turn on right, I don't know, you know, I don't want to hurt anybody, you know, if, how do I open my door? Is there planned, will there be planned, any education, any, how are we going to work with the community to go, you know, this is how things are done with these new bike lanes?
Yes, again, another excellent question, and the answer is yes. We were originally planning to do the education videos and the materials during the wintertime, but again, conditions are not the best, and we decided to postpone to the spring. The communication team is working with the project team in order to create that awareness campaign in how to ride a bike, what are the conditions. There will be people from the staff, and even, I know there is a partnership with the BRZ in order to have on-street ambassadors, that they can explain to people how to adapt to the changes that are being done, and there will be videos and material in social media that will also be available for residents and users.
Okay. And one more question, if I may. One of the things, economists, and whether you believe economists or not, historians are more reliable, in my opinion, but, you know, that's just, but economists are saying 2024 is going to be a miserable year for businesses in Canada. We know that. We know there is a fear among many businesses, you know, what uncertainty is there. But when you did your research on bike lanes, was there any research into how bike lanes impact positively, negatively, neutrally, onto the businesses that are adjacent to them?
Again, I believe the answer is yes, and we have Mr. Sanaman here, I don't know if he has a specific information about that type of engagement, but I know part of the study, when we hired the consultant, was in the overall benefits of cycling, and also how we can allow for multiple modes of transportation, not only vehicles, but also different alternatives to encourage people going downtown and actually to, to have an attraction of customers. Of course, there will be factors like snow, like Mr. Jewell explained before, that we are still learning and trying to make the changes, and we will be also working with all the stakeholders to ensure that we can adapt, and any ideas that are feasible or doable, we will also try to implement those either in the communication plan, but also in the operational changes that the team is doing.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Hagan.
Counselor Dorick?
Excuse me, yes, I have a couple of questions. Except for the part that has not been built, the fact, if there is a pause? Except for the part that has not been built, if there is a pause to allow for the downtown businesses and other people to make their views known to SPC, there really is no downside, is there?
Sorry, can you repeat the question again?
The resolution, except for that little piece that you said on Seventh Street between Fifth and Sixth Avenue, basically everything downtown that was meant to be built has already been built. So let's take that out of the equation for a second. If the resolution were to pass, then there would be no downside in terms of allowing people to have their input into, and I'm including the townhouse businesses that actually now can see what they look like, and waiting till the third quarter to get that input. And so what I'm talking about is real public participation, not sort of a qualitative analysis of what some people may or may not be thinking. Maybe I'm making it a little too complex, okay?
Yeah, no, I think I know what you're trying to ask, and the answer is the only detail that we will need to look into is the grant conditions. We have spent this amount, and if we delay whatever is left, there might be something that is tied to the time that we need to use that grant. So I will need to check those details, but other than that, there is nothing else left or planned for downtown. So if this resolution passes, the work that we have completed is done. We only have left this small section on Seventh Street, and if we decide to delay that, then again, I will need to check with the grant administrator to see if there are any conditions tied for the time.
But you've now known for at least 10 days this resolution was coming. Why is this information not available on today's date? It might have a significant impact on how council vote if they knew that the grant or a portion of the grant might not be at risk, or might be at risk. So as we sit here today, I'm going, well, I brought a resolution. There may be a certain amount of the grant, how much I don't know that was used for the downtown, because that information wasn't provided to me, or how much of that grant might have to be sent back, again, I don't know, because that information hasn't been provided to me, or what design requirements were required by the grant to fulfill bike lanes. Did it have to be the design that was utilized, or were other designs available? Again, that information is not available to me today.
So that information we do have. If we do any changes, any modifications, the grant needs to be repaid. What I don't have today is we delay the construction, the implementation, the actual work until one date, if there is any other implication. But what we did is, when we had the motion, we really needed to wait for direction from council to move forward and to know exactly what we were going to do. What we did is a general research in terms of what are the conditions of the grant? What can we use the money for? And if we decide to stop and remove, if there were any consequences, that I know today.
Okay. But if that information were available to me at the time I was drafting this, or shortly thereafter, it would have been easy for me to modify it, the resolution. Like, for example, had you told me that the only piece left to be built in downtown was between Fifth and Sixth Avenue on Seventh Street, bearing in mind that there was a contract that's already been in place, as a lawyer, I think it would be fair to say that you could assume that there is no way that I would be advocating a breach of a contract, that I could then amend the resolution, say, look, comply with contractual obligations, but put a pause on whether or no further contractual obligations. So let me phrase it this way. If the resolution was amended to allow for the construction or to compliance with the contract that's already apparently been signed or let out for Seventh Street between Fifth and Sixth Avenue, what consequences, if any, might there be in terms of the grant if everything were delayed to, or final decision were delayed to Q3 2024?
That we will need to get the answer from the grant administrator. If we delay until the one date, I don't have that information right now.
What's that? Okay, that creates... Okay. So I think, all right, what I'm going to do is, and there might be enough votes on council just to kill it today, if that's what they want to do, is I would propose that the motion be deferred for two weeks to allow administration to provide me with information as to confirmation that the remaining contract is for that Seventh Street between Fifth and Sixth Avenue, and that is sort of signed, sealed, and delivered, and we're obliged to honor it. And that can obviously can come from legal, they can make that determination. And the second thing is, what are the consequences in terms of the grant should we not proceed?
Todd, I just got a confirmation from the team. They were able to get the details as the meeting is happening, and we have until next year, fall of next year, 2026, actually, it's 2026, to complete the project. So if this is delayed, this work until the fall of this season or even next summer, we will still be eligible to access the grant funding that we have committed to.
Okay, but the contract, I also don't want to, if you've let out the contract on Seventh Street between Fifth and Sixth Avenue, is there a timeframe for that as to when the work is done? Like, I don't want someone in good faith to have signed a contract when the procurement's gone out.
So again, talking to Mr. Bremen, he's the project manager for this project, there is a possibility, or actually, most of the times, we have the possibility to negotiate with the contractor if we need a delay, especially in this case, if it's a delay because we need to engage, or there is any condition, that we will be able to postpone the work until further notice. So there is a high probability that we have done this in the past, so this could be done.
Okay. So the contract between whoever it might be for the construction between Fifth and, or sorry, yes, Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue on Seventh Street, that decision or can be delayed, as can any potential penalties with respect to the grant funding, and that's a decision has to be done by the fall of 2026. So if I give you the example is that, all right, this resolution passes, no more work to be done in the downtown with respect to paths, and all of the information provided to the assets and infrastructure, the assets and infrastructure at a meeting to be held with them, and then a report back to council no later than September 30th of 2023, being the, no later than Q3 2024, we can still be on side with the contract and whatever decisions need to be made with respect to the grant funding that we've been talking about. Is that fair to say?
I will say yes, but if we get a few minutes just to confirm and get all the details, that will be probably the best.
I was just going to ask if that'd be okay, if we just take a break, admin can gather some thoughts. I know I had a question earlier and some of these other questions. Can we take a 10-minute break here?
Sure.
Is that fine? All right, just to work through a few things. So we'll come back before 2:40, we'll say. Okay?
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for your patience as we had administration work through a few things and conversations with the public. So if I can, I'll turn the time over to councillor Dotick. I do, I believe there's a referral motion coming forward.
Perhaps you will.
Sorry, I thought you had it. My apologies.
Okay. It is. And I'll explain it once I read it unless there are questions. So the referral motion is be it resolved that city council refer this motion to the May 2nd 2024 meeting of the assets and infrastructure SPC to receive public input on this matter and direct administration work with the downtown BIA to invite downtown businesses to the SPC meeting and three direct administration to provide additional information on the project for the May 2nd 2024 assets and infrastructure SPC. Are there any questions?
On the timing, one of the things that that I would only be concerned about is that is we won't really have much new experience with the bike lanes or changes. I'm, I would, for one, I'd love to have a community conversation about these after we've had a full season or at least a full year to sort of experience them. So I'm just wondering on the timing if there's a possibility even pushing that out to say November because they were opened in November, that would then in November would be a full year. So I'm wondering about the thoughts on the timing.
I'm going to stick with what the referral motion says. And the reason for that is that no decision has to be made at that time. You know that once goes to SBC, they're going to refer at the council at that time. They may say, don't do anything at all or send it to November or less than two years or, or as if I may be so bold, let's see where it is. Comments on certain social media, they could say, I love this one, Reiko dildo with the master plan. I like that one. Or number two, Dotick is an idiot and seems more concerned with giant unnecessary trucks being able to park over cycling safety. And the third one is simply a lucky guess. It says, Dotick was a crap mayor and is proving to be an even crappier councillor. Anyways, the purpose of the referral motion is we've had a lot of people that have come here and it's a council meeting, so they cannot speak at it. But we've also heard, and I know it's, it's not a statistically valid poll or anything else like that, but you can't ignore the fact that recently the public in general was asked the question in Lethbridge Herald, should the city stop planning for any new bicycle lanes? And the total votes for the Lethbridge Herald poll, which is a lot, 729, had 554 in support, 175 against, stop the planning for any new bicycle lane. So that's by margin of three to one. So I'm not saying that that poll is correct, but by the same token, we can't assume that the folks that are advocating with respect to the bicycles are correct as well. So the purpose of this is to allow those who are here today that want to actually speak, be able to speak at the assets and infrastructure, and those in the business community that feel that they are directly impacted by this also have the opportunity to be heard. Now, the members of council who are on assets and infrastructure SPC will be given the information, additional information with respect to the contract we've been talking about between Fifth Avenue and, or sorry, yes, Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue on Seventh Street, and more information with respect to contract with respect to completing that work, as well as the grand consequences in the event that we do not proceed this project, and the timing as to when the grand consequences might take effect. So in a bit, if we were to vote on the original motion, we would be doing so with not sufficient information, thus the purpose of the referral to the May 2nd 2024 assets and infrastructure.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor. The second question I had, Mr. Mayor, is through you to city manager or designate. Councillor Dotick just mentioned about the little piece on Seventh between Fifth and Sixth Avenues. When was that supposed to be, would this put that on hold at any point? And maybe this is a bit selfish of me because I've been excited for that section because I like the, I like going up Seventh Ave, and now I don't have the connection to the downtown infrastructure. And so that was the piece that most excited me, actually. And that'll, I think, help bring the traffic downtown, the cycling traffic. So when was that scheduled for and would this resolution or this deferral put that on hold?
Again, thanks for the question. And if we don't get any different direction from council today, that's scheduled to be done starting in April and will be completed sometime before the end of May. So at this point, that section is what is the last step to finalize. And as you mentioned, it's just the connection of that path.
And that timeline will hold?
That will continue unless we get a different direction from council today.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager or designate. So just to confirm, with this referral motion to the May assets and infrastructure SPC, the information we receive will include the granting information as outlined by councillor Dotick. Will this also include any other commitments we have related to the project? So for example, the link pathway, anything that is tied to that?
Thanks for the question. And sure answer, yes. We will be doing at that meeting, most likely, a quick presentation saying this is the project update or status, what is left and what are the next steps. And after that, we're going to be working with the BRSAD in order to have a communication and invite every stakeholder that will be affected by this project. And going back to the SPC meeting, I think that's the right track to start the conversation and getting the engagement from all the stakeholders in order to get the feedback and the input on what else can be done or even what improvements can be done to what we have today.
Okay. And then also you'll bring forward an update on operational matters. So for example, how we're addressing the snow clearing and accessibility issues. You did a brief update of that today, but I'm, I'm going to make the assumption you'll be doing some more studying between now and May to even bring more improvements forward to us for consideration?
So what I will commit today is that what we have done to date, we will report back on those changes and improvements that we have done since October till now, or anything else that we have, most likely within the next two weeks or three weeks until the deadline for submission of this material. And that also will also, by doing this in May, I think councillor Carlson mentioned that before too, will give us the time to have better weather, to have more people using it and getting more feedback. So that May meeting could be a really good session to get feedback. Hopefully, we have weather that will allow
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for your patience as we had administration work through a few things and conversations with the public. So if I can, I'll turn the time over to councillor Dotick. I do, I believe there's a referral motion coming forward.
Perhaps you will.
Sorry, I thought you had it. My apologies.
Okay. It is. And I'll explain it once I read it unless there are questions. So the referral motion is be it resolved that city council refer this motion to the May Second 2024 meeting of the assets and infrastructure SPC to receive public input on this matter. And direct administration work with the downtown BIA to invite downtown businesses to the SPC meeting and through direct administration to provide additional information on the project for the May Second 2024 assets and infrastructure SPC. Are there any questions?
Councillor Carlson.
On the timing, one of the things that that I would only be concerned about is that is we won't really have much new experience with the bike lanes or changes. I'm, I would, for one, I'd love to have a community conversation about these after we've had a full season or at least a full year to sort of experience them. So I'm just wondering on the timing if there's a possibility even pushing that out to say November because they were opened in November, that would then in November would be a full year. So I'm wondering about the thoughts on the timing.
I'm going to stick with what the referral motion says. And the reason for that is that no decision has to be made at that time. You know that once goes to SBC, they're going to refer at the council at that time. They may say, don't do anything at all, or send it to November or less than two years or, or as if I may be so bold, let's see where it is. Comments on certain social media, they could say, I love this one, "Reco dildo with the master plan." I like that one. Or number two, "Dotick is an idiot and seems more concerned with giant unnecessary trucks being able to park over cycling safety." And the third one is simply a lucky guess. It says, "Dotick was a crap mayor and is proving to be an even crappier councillor." Anyways, the purpose of the referral motion is we've had a lot of people that have come here and it's a council meeting, so they cannot speak at it. But we've also heard, and I know it's, it's not a statistically valid poll or anything else like that, but you can't ignore the fact that recently the public in general was asked the question in Lethbridge Herald, should the city stop planning for any new bicycle lanes? And the total votes for the Lethbridge Herald poll, which is a lot, 729, had 554 in support, 175 against, stop the planning for any new bicycle lane. So that's by margin of three to one. So I'm not saying that that poll is correct, but by the same token, we can't assume that the folks that are advocating with respect to the bicycles are correct as well. So the purpose of this is to allow those who are here today that want to actually speak, be able to speak at the assets and infrastructure, and those in the business community that feel that they are directly impacted by this also have the opportunity to be heard. Now, the members of council who are on assets and infrastructure SPC will be given the information, additional information with respect to the contract we've been talking about between Fifth Avenue and, or sorry, yes, Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue on Seventh Street, and more information with respect to contract with respect to completing that work, as well as the grand consequences in the event that we do not proceed this project, and the timing as to when the grand consequences might take effect. So in a bid, if we were to vote on the original motion, we would be doing so with not sufficient information, thus the purpose of the referral to the May Second 2024 assets and infrastructure.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor. The second question I had, Mr. Mayor, is through you to city manager or designate. Councillor Dotick just mentioned about the little piece on Seventh between Fifth and Sixth avenues. When was that supposed to be, would this put that on hold at any point? And maybe this is a bit selfish of me because I've been excited for that section because I like the, I like going up Seventh Ave, and now I don't have the connection to the downtown infrastructure. And so that was the piece that most excited me, actually. And that'll, I think, help bring the traffic downtown, the cycling traffic. So when was that scheduled for and would this resolution or this deferral put that on hold?
Again, thanks for the question. And if we don't get any different direction from council today, that's scheduled to be done starting in April and will be completed sometime before the end of May. So at this point, that section is what is the last step to finalize. And as you mentioned, it's just the connection of that path.
And that timeline will hold?
That will continue unless we get a different direction from council today.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Schmidt-Rempel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager or designate. So just to confirm, with this referral motion to the May Assets and Infrastructure SPC, the information we receive will include the granting information as outlined by councillor Dotick. Will this also include any other commitments we have related to the project? So for example, the link pathway, anything that is tied to that?
Thanks for the question. And short answer, yes. We will be doing at that meeting, most likely, a quick presentation saying this is the project update or status, what is left and what are the next steps. And after that, we're going to be working with the BRZ in order to have a communication and invite every stakeholder that will be affected by this project. And going back to the SPC meeting, I think that's the right track to start the conversation and getting the engagement from all the stakeholders in order to get the feedback and the input on what else can be done, or even what improvements can be done to what we have today.
Okay. And then also you'll bring forward an update on operational matters. So for example, how we're addressing the snow clearing and accessibility issues. You did a brief update of that today, but I'm, I'm going to make the assumption you'll be doing some more studying between now and May to even bring more improvements forward to us for consideration?
So what I will commit today is that what we have done to date, we will report back on those changes and improvements that we have done since October till now, or anything else that we have, most likely within the next two weeks or three weeks until the deadline for submission of this material. And that also will also, by doing this in May, I think councillor Carlson mentioned that before too, will give us the time to have better weather, to have more people using it and getting more feedback. So that May meeting could be a really good session to get feedback. Hopefully, we have weather that will allow people to ride the bikes and we can actually incorporate that into future learnings.
Okay. So there will be some data collection on how those bike lanes are used between now and then as well?
That is correct. That is currently happening.
Okay. Thank you.
A quick question. Just to clarify, an answer that came earlier about the removal of snow on these pathways, I'd heard that we are leasing, renting, or whatever. But back in November, it's my understanding, we were told that when we knew the snow was going to be coming, how would the snow be removed? We were told that there, we had purchased equipment to have that removed. Is that, was that meant to be, we were going to rent this equipment? I'm just curious to know. We don't have the equipment ourselves?
So my understanding, the piece of equipment that we were trying to procure was not available, so we decided to go with a rental. And that's what we have in place. And we're going to move to a permanent solution as it becomes.
Oh, so had it been available, we would have, we would have had it. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Councillor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. So before I comment on the referral motion, I do have a question for Mr. Briarly or Mr. Elliott. On April 25th, we have the community conversations, which is prior to this standing policy committee. I don't think people realize we have many ways that they can interact with the public. There will be booths at the community conversations. Will we have or can we add easily a booth that would help address this as well, that could be on bike lanes? I know we've done this many times and done much public engagement, but can we, or will we have one at this particular event?
Through the chair to councillor Croson. If that's the wish of council, we'd be happy to make sure that happens.
Okay. So councillor Dotick, I would like to ask if you would take a friendly amendment to add to your referral motion, that direct administration to have a booth at the April 25th community conversations on bike lanes where people can give their comments so that if they can come to the May Second meeting, wonderful. If they can't, they have another avenue, as well as, of course, 311 and all the other ways. But would that be amenable to you to add?
A big booth?
I think we could go for a little unicycle.
Sure, that's fine with me.
Thank you.
All right. I see no further questions. So just open debate. I'll turn that over to councillor Dotick.
I'll say that for closing.
Councillor Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you councillor Dotick for seeing the wisdom of inviting the public down. I won't be supporting it because I just think it's too soon, but more information is always good information, but I wish it was just pushed a little further out.
Councillor Middleton-Hope.
Thank you, your worship. I retain a number of questions that I'm hope, I'm really hoping will be answered by the May Second date. I'm in favor of the motion to defer so that we have some opportunity for administration to provide us with responses to those questions. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Croson.
I will very reluctantly support this. I would love to just kill it now, but I also understand the need for information. I had all the information I needed when I put my hand up during the capital budget on this. So I knew where we were heading on this. But as I said, I also know from, that this is a year where there is fear and uncertainty, and I do not mind having community conversations. So I will support this and invite not only the BIA, but all businesses, as well as members of the bike community, members of the community in general, because this impacts everybody. So I hope that we will see anyone who has an interest in this at the May Second meeting because all public engagement is real public engagement.
Thank you councillor Parker.
Well, thank you very much. And I think I will support the resolution. My colleague, councillor Middleton-Hope, said you being here is democracy. Well, it's halfway there. Democracy is having you an opportunity to have your say and to question where we are, where we are going. And I think by your present state, that sends a big message. And when I say people who can speak, I know there's a lot of people who are bike riders, but there are other people who are on the other side of the issue as well. And so it's incumbent upon us to ask the questions. I know there's only four members of council in the SBC, but every member of council has the right to be there, and anyone in the community has the right to ask questions as well. So I think if we're going to do it, let's do it right. I do believe we might have to give this process a year to go through, you know, the growing pains and all that. They did catch me off guard, the bike lanes, but I think a lot of people don't like change. But if we also, as we change, we can learn from mistakes and learn to make things better. I think we do that in all aspects of this community. I think we all do that as citizens and as our own personal lives. So I will be supporting that resolution under those grounds. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Schmidt-Rempel.
Thank you very much. I, again, I also will very reluctantly support this. For me, this, this is Jane Jacobs 101. Cycling and pedestrians, they make a better space, they make a busier space, and that equals less unwanted behavior in a space. And it's just the benefits of more eyes on the street. But I do support councillor Dotick's initiative to do more community consultation and hear back from our downtown businesses. So while I, I would like to kill this right now, I will see this move forward to assets and infrastructure, and we will have the community engagement. Thank you.
Councillor Palladino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We went from ripping up lanes downtown to hosting more public consultations, so I will support this motion.
Thank you councillor Campbell.
Yeah, I'm not much more to add. I was originally, the original motion, I was ready to hopefully quell, but I like the compromise here from councillor Dotick to get all kinds of information. We're going to get that and we're going to make the proper decision after consultation. So I will support the resolution.
Thank you. I too will support this. I, I'll make sure that I keep your name as councillor Reco Dotick. I won't, I won't change that. But no, thank you very much councillor Dotick for bringing this forward. At the mini break that we had, you had the opportunity to speaking, to speak with Ms. Amies from downtown BRZ. And we were chatting about how, how engagement, how this is important and how we've, we came up with just a few little ideas. Don't know if they'll pass. We're going to look at this and, and come back in May. But thank you for, for being engaged and being here to listen on behalf of the downtown BRZ. Because I think it's, it's important. It's, if the business in the downtown are wanting these bike paths, and if it's their business that are going to be affected, as we've heard from some, now, again, there's a few sides that we have, we have heard. It's important to be heard. And as councillor Parker had mentioned, the engagement and being able to come in, come up to the podium, ask the questions that you have, I think are, is, is the other half of that democracy. Come in and be, be heard and have your questions answered. So I think it's important that we have additional engagement. I thank councillor Croson for putting this in for the booth on April 25th, that amendment. I think that is a great idea. Again, additional engagement and not reluctantly, but I will support this. Thank you. And over to councillor.
I have a motion arising to the next meeting.
Okay, councillor Dotick to close. Or if you've got a motion.
Comes about.
It comes up. Okay, councillor Dotick.
When I brought you the initial resolution, it wasn't done cavalierly. I have come to the conclusion that we've been banding around the phrase public consultation quite loosely in the past. And I am not convinced that the public consultation that has been conducted in the past has always actually arrived at a conclusion that we can actually rely upon. So that's one of the reasons I brought this resolution, to ensure that everyone is heard on this, including the downtown businesses who might be most affected. So that's one reason I brought the resolution, because I have not, as yet, been convinced that the public consultation that occurred before was in fact effective consultation and actually truly reflected what the wishes of folks were. Second reason is there are safety issues that I would like to see addressed. There are different apply, whether it's on Fourth Avenue or on, on Seventh Street. The issue of the driver opening the vehicle onto Fourth Avenue and someone running into it because it's now been narrowed so significantly, as well on Fourth Avenue, passengers exiting vehicles with, and particularly young children, jumping out of the vehicle and all of a sudden potentially being hit by a bicycle. So those, as well as the accessibility issues that have been addressed by removing some of the concrete barriers. So I just want to make it clear that this was not a cavalier resolution. I was not convinced that the public consultation was sufficient when this was initially planned. And let's not lose sight of the fact that when people are often given notice of something, when they see a picture of it, they're not really sure what it's going to look like when they actually see it and realize what sort of an impact it may have upon them, then they really get to see what is happening in the place that they do business. So I would ask for council support with respect to this referral motion.
Thank you. And I know that I've already spoken, but I'm going to give myself a little leeway here to just, as chair, to make a comment. I just, and it's, and it's for everybody. I'm, I just, we've heard a lot of communication and something that's, that's come up through this, communications, emails, social media, et cetera. And I just, I just, Lethbridge, we can be so much better than some of the comments and stuff that have come in by email. And I just would ask that we would treat others with respect regardless of our beliefs or opinions. And so I think it's important. I did want to mention that earlier and I wasn't able to do so. So thank you for letting the chair re-debate, but appreciate that. So with that, councillor Dotick, motions has been called. All in favor? And those opposed? All right. Do we need a roll call with that, Madam City Clerk? No, we're good? All right. All right. I do have a, and anybody that is here, I'm not sure if anyone is here for the public hearing that will come.
My motion arising will be the next meeting.
Will be, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. We were going to a motion arising, but if there's anybody here, we will be going to public hearing right after the motion arising that's come from councillor Croson. And the motion arising is whereas the success of business is critical to the health and vibrancy of the downtown core, and whereas there are many ideas the community may have to address concerns and make improvements, therefore be it resolved that council direct administration to invite community engagement at the upcoming community conversations scheduled for April 25th regarding how the city of Lethbridge can support businesses in the downtown. And further be resolved that multiple options in addition to community conversation event be made available to the citizens of Lethbridge to offer suggestions. And I will open to questions, and I have one to start.
I have one change already.
Okay.
On my third, therefore, I'm like a business downtown.
I would just like it to say, support local business.
Support local business.
Yes.
That takes my question that I was going to ask you.
Yeah. When Mr. Elliott and I were talking about this, I don't think I was specific enough. I would like it to be all Lethbridge business, not just business in the downtown.
And my question to you councillor Croson, is this is beyond adding this into the previous resolution anyways? You wanted this in addition to?
No, the other one was specifically about bike lanes. This would be a booth at the community conversations, inviting people to help us. Because as I said, we know 2024 by all accounts is going to be a year that we're going to have, we're going to unfortunately see bankruptcies in businesses across Canada. And I would like to do whatever support we can for local businesses. And maybe there's some good ideas out there. So the booth would be for people to come forward, businesses, individuals, to come forward and have the conversation, to give us some ideas, have that conversation about what we could do. We would then have to look at it to see what's actually legally feasible, you know, what we can actually do. But I, when I hear so many of the conversations we're having, from the task force to the bike lanes, I'm seeing that underlying fear. It is, my business is suffering. I need help. And I think that is actually the real conversation we should be having as a community. And of course, any group can come to an SPC and have that conversation. But since we already have the community conversation scheduled, we know it's April 25th, let's use that as a launching pad to actually look at this issue, because I think it's there. And maybe nobody will come to this booth, but I suspect when we open this up, there will be people saying, yes, why haven't we had this conversation before?
Thank you. And to Madam City Clerk, seeing the resolution, this does fit in with motion arising enough to do with the previous resolution that.
That's my question.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'll give you the advice for the chair to take. A motion is rising is related to the item. So if this is related enough to the item we just heard, you can go ahead with it. Otherwise, it should be maybe a proper motion brought to the next meeting. So I'll leave that with you.
Can we speak to that? The question I would have is, is I see this happening from the previous amendment to councillor Dotick's resolution, a majority that is what I see here. I don't know if it is enough of a change, but I would open it up to my colleagues if there's any. Councillor Carlson?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. If I can direct my question to you. I was quickly trying to scan our procedure by law, 6250. It can, because I support the motion, but I do think it's out of order. So I'm wondering, can council by consensus just add it, or is it something we should put off for two weeks?
So again, if a motion is related to a motion on the agenda, related enough, a motion arising can come. If council does deem it not related enough, then it should come to a future meeting properly, through proper procedure. So through an agenda and vetted, probably.
So the, so council could say that in our opinion, this is related enough?
The chair would make that decision.
Or could we, could we add that if we put somewhere in there bike lanes and other, then at least it's related?
Bike lanes is already going to community conversations.
And bike lanes is already going to commu, okay. I, I like, I like the resolution. I think we're going to get the results that we already have stated in the previous resolution. But I, from what I'm hearing here, we do want to move forward with this. And councillor Middleton-Hope, acting mayor.
I don't think that's the question. The question is, does this relate back to the previous motion? Is it related enough?
It is not.
It is to me.
Then, then it's your call. So let's make a decision.
Yeah. I don't believe it is.
I would challenge that.
Challenge it? And what's the next procedure on a challenge, Madam City Clerk?
So you've made a ruling.
Yep.
Someone has challenged your ruling. So then you're going to vote on the, the challenge to the chair.
All right.
So what councillor Croson has just put forward, council will now vote on it.
Okay. And so the vote would be?
Is this a motion arising?
Is this a motion arising? So I will ask my colleagues, do you want to do it by roll call, Madam City Clerk?
Sure.
If you say, if you say you're in favor.
Sorry.
It comes forward. If you say you're opposed, it waits two weeks.
Yeah.
Okay.
In favor of it coming forward right now, I guess is the way to put it. And so.
As it is.
If you're in favor of it coming forward right now, you'll vote in favor. So.
Okay. So councillor Croson.
In favor.
Councillor Dotick.
In favor.
Councillor Palladino.
In favor.
Councillor Parker.
In favor.
Councillor Schmidt-Rempel.
In favor.
Councillor Middleton-Hope.
Oh, certainly in favor.
Deputy Mayor Campbell.
Favor.
Mayor Higgin.
Opposed.
And councillor Carlson.
Opposed.
Seven to two. That carries. It does go forward as is.
All right. Perfect. So, and now we vote on, that was enough for the vote then, Madam City Clerk? Okay, perfect. With that, we will.
Sorry, that was just the challenge to the chair. So now you vote on it or debate it. Questions?
Okay, any questions or debate on this, or can we move forward with a vote? I see no questions to debate. All in favor? All right.
All right. So now.
We will now recess to public, or is it, yeah, recess to public hearing.
You can take a little break.
And it'll be about 10 minutes to come back for a public hearing. 3:30, we'll say, 15 minutes.
We could have just gone right into it. Yeah.
Yeah.[535.21]
All right, we will move on with the bylaws. And 6433, I call to order the public hearing for bylaws 6432, amendment to the West Lethbridge, Phase Two, area structure plan, and bylaw 6433, land use bylaw amendment 423, Caledonia Boulevard West and 1220 30th Street West. In accordance with section 692.2 of the municipal government Act, there will be one presentation for both bylaws as bylaw 6433 is dependent upon bylaw 6432. The bylaw for this procedure will be, we'll begin on, begin by calling Tyson Boylan, Senior Community Planner, to provide background to the case. Anyone else who wishes to speak to either of these bylaws will then be called upon. We'll then ask three times if there's anybody else who wishes to make a presentation. City Council then have the opportunity to ask questions of any of the presenters. The hearing will then be closed. Consideration of second and third reading will be made by City Council immediately following the public hearings. So I now call on Mr. Boylan to provide background to the case.
Thank you, your worshipful members of council. Today's presentation involves two related amendments. The first, bylaw 6432, is a proposed amendment to the West Lethbridge Phase Two ASP. And the second, bylaw 6433, is a related land use bylaw amendment that involves two parcels. And this is to allow for a new elementary school in the crossings and the piers neighborhoods within West Lethbridge. So to start, the slide above describes the applicant and the purpose of the ASP amendment today. Representative from the applicant is also joining us today as well to answer questions. So the boundaries of the West Lethbridge Phase Two ASP are shown above. It consumes a large portion of West Lethbridge and lies between Indian Battle Heights, Faristy Village, and the city boundary. This ASP was first approved in 2005, and it contains a number of neighborhoods that are currently under development, including Copperwood, Gary Station, and of course, the crossings, where the associated rezoning is occurring. So the proposed amendment removes the designation of whether schools are public or separate within the ASP document. This is an outdated practice, and this amendment corrects this. It will also update various housekeeping items, such as making the ASP boundary match with those of other surrounding ASPs, and updating names and statistics. Finally, the amendment also adds an additional school site to the North Village of the ASP. The conceptual location of this is now shown in the ASP land use map. It is also the school site that is subject to the rezoning bylaw that we are also hearing today. So we'll now move to the proposed rezoning. The applicant is the same as the ASP amendment, and the proposed rezoning application will allow for construction of the elementary school to commence. So the proposed amendment area is outlined in green, as is shown above. The site currently, is currently undeveloped and split between the crossings and the piers neighborhoods. To the north is a recently developed playground. To the east and south is residential development of the crossings, as well as the high schools. To the west is the remainder of the piers, which has an outline plan already in place, but has not yet begun development. So here are some photos taken on the ground. The left image here is at the intersection of Caledonia and Abatibi, looking across the site towards the northwest. The developer's sign stating that it is planned to be the home of a future school is in the foreground here, with some residential development and a part of the playground behind it. No development yet exists to the west. The right photo is taken from the other side of the site looking towards the southwest. The proposed school site is again in the foreground here, and this time, existing houses in Caledonia Place are just in the background. So here's a concept map from the Benton Crossing outline plan, showing the site as public open space, which includes parks and schools. And a portion of the site is also part of the adjacent piers outline plan area. It is shown as a school site within this outline plan as well. So the slide shows the existing and the proposed land use districts. The existing FUD district that makes up the majority of the site does not allow for education facilities or parks, requiring this changed to the PB district, which allows for them as a permitted use. The PR district does allow for, for education facilities, but only as discretionary uses. Having this school site under one PB land use district will facilitate future development approval. So for evaluation and analysis, both the ASP amendment and the rezoning are in line with the SSRP and the MDP in regards to providing sufficient institutional and public land uses and working with local school divisions to provide for their school needs. The school is also shown in map eight of the MDP, as is highlighted and circled in red above here. And both the Benton Crossing and the piers outline plan have planned for a school in this location. No concerns from city staff were identified through our circulation for either the amendment to the ASP or the rezoning. So for notification, mailers are sent out to the 23 owners of the parcel shown on the green hatcheries above, ads appeared on the Herald, and this was also advertised on the city's website. The school district also hosted their own open house about the school on February 21st at the nearby high school. And our department received three inquiries from, from nearby property owners, just asking about the school in general, and also for construction timelines. So in conclusion, both bylaws 6432 and 6433 are compliant with all existing statutes and approved plans for the area, and our recommendation is on the slide above. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boylan. Now, I understand, as you mentioned before, the applicant is here just to answer any questions. That's correct, Mr. Boylan? Okay. And any members of the public which, which to, with, let me try that again. Are there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on either of these matters? And for a second time, are there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? And for a third and final time, are there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on either of these matters? Hearing none, it is now time for City Council to ask question of the presenters. Council Schmidt Rempel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the presenters, or our city manager, or anybody that can answer this. Are there any servicing costs to the city of Lethbridge at this time for the land?
I will actually call upon our land development manager to answer that, because he is the developer of the area. He can-
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of council. Thank you for having me this afternoon, just about said this morning. That was a while ago now. Regarding the question from Councilor Schmidt Rempel through the chair to regard, in regard to that, there are typical development costs that would have been borne by Lethbridge Land as the developer of that area, outside of any specific costs that would have been borne by the city as the corporate entity that provides the property for the school division to take over and build their, their school on.
Okay, so that's already been taken care of by Opportunity Lethbridge, then?
So there, there are some additional costs to the property that are in process, in terms of getting the site ready for the actual development of the school. That's been covered in our Lethbridge Land budget.
Okay. And will we be collecting that from, like, will any costs be recouped back from any developers?
There are no boundary conditions on the site. There might be some opportunity for cost shares, depending on what broader scope of work could be done for this site and the site with a developer to the west, but no specific boundary conditions that will allow us to capture funds back from the other developer.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further questions. And so, hearing none, I now declare the public hearing closed. Where's, there. This matter may be cited later this afternoon, following the public hearing. If many of you remember, a little while ago, we had a public hearing. Bylaw 6432, amendment to the West Lethbridge Phase Two Area Structure Plan 13.1. For a second reading, be resolved that bylaw 6432, amendment to the West Lethbridge Phase Two Area Structure Plan A, Area Structure Plan ASP, can be given second reading. Oh my goodness. I think I'll be all right. So with that, and it's, can I have a move around that? Counselor Carlson. All right. Question's been called. All in favor? Opposed? That's right. And for a third reading, be resolved that bylaw 6432, amendment to the West Lethbridge Phase Two Area Structure Plan ASP be given third reading, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Counselor Carlson. Question's been called. All in favor? And that does pass unanimously. Thank you. And we can have Counselor Carlson to follow up the second half. Moved by Counselor Carlson, 6433, land use bylaw amendment regarding 423, Caledonia Boulevard West and 1220 30th Street West. For second reading, be resolved that bylaw 6433, land use bylaw amendment regarding 423 Caledonia Boulevard West and 1220 30th Street West be given second reading. Counselor Carlson? Question's been called for the school. All in favor. Any opposed? That's unanimous. And for a third reading, be resolved that bylaw 6433, land use bylaw amendment 423 Caledonia Boulevard West and 1220 30th Street West be given third reading, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Counselor Carlson. Question's been called. All in favor. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Yes?
I would like to make mention to the city-
Oh, there's, yeah. Counsel Doherty is not for this, so-
Thank you so much.
All right, we'll move back to OBM's from Counselor Carlson. Lethbridge Police Commission bylaw appointment amendment 6.1. Whereas, and I think if it's up on the- Is that fine? I think everybody has read through that. Okay, I'm not reading it anymore. Counselor Carlson?
I can't just pull it from the agenda. I think we got information from Police Commission. So I could pull it from agenda, or we could just do a quick vote. Either, I'll leave it up to you, Mr. Mayor. We could just remove it. The new information-
This is your reso. Do you wish to-
I'll just, I'll just limit debate and call the question.
All right. Question has been called. All in favor? No, 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 no.
No, this is of the motion.
Of the motion.
The, the letter we got from the Police Commission would say, "Do not pass this."
Yes, my, yes. So if you support this, you are not supporting what the Police Commission-
Recommendation from-
Recommendation-
Recommendation from-
Nope. Okay, so all in favor of Counselor Carlson's OBM? Counselor Carlson and Counselor Crowson? And Counselor Schmidt Rempel. All opposed? All right. Perfect. All right. All right. Yeah. So next, from, whoa. Let's go to bylaws, because we do have, the next one is Counselor Doherty, and I'm not sure if we can have 220. Did you want to see if-
He doesn't know we have still a meeting, right?
All right. Yeah. We'll go into bylaws from Counselor Palladino. Bylaw 6439, a bylaw to amend bylaws 5803, elections bylaw. For a second reading, be resolved that 6439, a bylaw to amend bylaws 5803, elections bylaw be given second reading. Counselor Palladino?
Do this. What's that? I know, I do recall. So first reading to bylaw 6439 goes back a year ago, actually. Council adopted a resolution to increase the number of signatures required when a candidate submits his nomination to run for mayor or council. Administra- Or her. Not going to go there. So council, or administration was directed to make the necessary changes to the existing bylaw, to require the number of eligible elector signatures for council and mayor to 50 and 100 respective, respectfully, respectively. We did have a bit of discussion on this, but if, at the end, we felt it was, third reading was warranted. So unless feelings have changed, I would move second reading. Thank you. Up for debate, Mr. Mayor. I didn't support this when it came forward. Basically, my thinking has not changed, that anything that would impede anyone from putting their name forward for public office is detrimental to democracy, in my view. So I will be not supporting this. Thank you.
So zero signatures. No, all right. All right. Any further questions? Counsel Doherty?
Questions? I thought it was a debate.
It's just on, on questions, but we did have some, no, that's fine. Did you want to question, Counsel Doherty? Entertain questions if you do have. If not?
No.
Debate?
Yeah.
All right. And Counselor Parker, just before I carry on, debate? Okay, go ahead.
Now it's my turn?
Yep.
Yeah, I voted against this when it first came out as well. It, it seems a little arbitrary to me when you pick numbers, whether they be five or 10, whatever, whatever numbers are, 25, 50, or 100 for the mayor. Again, even if one person is not able to meet the threshold, we are saying, because you can't get sufficient signatures, you can't run. And to me, that is not a good way of doing democratic business. So I will not be supporting this resolution.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you very much. And I remember when we first were discussing this, and the first, first look at it, had, there was a financial aspect deposit and all that. And I felt that people should not be disenfranchised if they didn't have the resources, financial resources. But I think when you're in an election, and if you want to rally people to support you, if you should, it's incumbent upon you to get at least that many, that many more signatures, 50 to 100, to make it valid. I think it shows your seriousness, shows that you're willing to put some time into it, and put a little bit of work into a civic election. So I think it's the least we can ask for people who are running, and so I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Counsel Carlson, or Crowson, I'm sorry.
I will not be supporting this, for much the same reasons my colleagues have said. I do not want to stop public engagement in any way, and I would like to get it back to the five signatures it used to be, so I will not be supporting this.
Thank you, Counsel Crowson. I will be supporting this. As I looked out the many different communities that we have within Alberta, we are the lowest of signatures. And so, looking at the larger communities, there are 100, 200, 300. So I think having the signatures, I did not support the dollar amount that many other communities do have. But as far as the signatures to go out, and if you can get, I know the lowest vote ever in the past would for sure have the amount of signatures that would be required. So for that, I will be supporting this. Counsel Schmidt Rempel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I too will be supporting this. I go back to my original argument. The University of Lethbridge requires 10 signatures to run for Students' Union. Lethbridge College requires 15 for Students' Association. And whether we're putting our names forward for election of either councillor or mayor, or even running to bring attention to an issue, which some have done in the past, or have ideas we want to see discussed, both offices should warrant 50 to 100, 50 or 100 signatures. Getting more than five signatures is a way of creating public engagement, and the lack of public engagement is something many of us at this table have had concerns about. And I would say that if you're collecting names at a bar, which is easy enough to do, you're probably going to engage with those people, and they're likely to engage with you back. If we, if anybody wants to come to the bar with me to get signatures next time, just give me a call. We'll go as a group. If we aren't engaging more than five people to sign our paperwork, how can we expect voters to come out for an election? And if we, as candidates, aren't interested in engaging no more than five people to sign our paperwork, how can residents trust us to engage with them on other issues? Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Schmidt Rempel. And you will be buying if we join you?
It's a year ago from the date, almost, if you're-
All right. Counsel Middleton Hope?
Let me be simple. I'm in favor of this motion.
With that, we'll open up debate. Counsel Palladino to open debate? Oh, sorry. My gosh. We didn't have questions. Well, we did have questions, too. Do I need a break?
You know, it's been a long day.
I think we had enough already. All right. Sorry, my colleagues. With that, question's been called. All in favor? Roll call, Madam City Clerk?
Counsel Doherty?
Reluctantly opposed.
Counsel Palladino?
I'm in favor.
Counsel Parker? Counsel Schmidt Rempel?
In favor.
Acting Mayor Middleton Hope?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Favor.
Mayor Higgins?
In favor.
Counsel Carlson?
Opposed.
Counsel Crowson?
Not reluctantly in favor either.
Okay, 6-3, that carries.
All right. For a third reading from Counsel Palladino, be resolved that bylaw 6439, a bylaw to amend bylaw 5803, elections bylaw be given a third reading, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Question has been called. All in favor. Do we, do that roll call, or is it going to be the same? It's the same. All right. I wouldn't expect any difference. What's that? We did. I said, question's been called. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Any opposed? This is, it feels like a Monday. I'm sorry. I can, maybe that's it. I'm sorry. My goodness. All right. Now we'll move to the OBM from Counselor Doherty, that has rejoined us. Lethbridge District Exhibition Monthly Financial Reporting. We do have it up on the screen. And any questions? I'm sure my colleagues have had the opportunity to go through this, if not multiple times. Is there any questions on this resolution? Counsel Crowson?
I think the only question we have to ask is to our city manager, is this doable?
Through the mayor, yes.
That's all I need to hear. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Counsel Doherty, question or debate? Open debate? All right, go ahead.
It really is self-explanatory. It's just getting information, so that's it.
There's no further debate. So with that, question's been called. All in favor? Are there any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. I almost went into, I almost went into for a third reading. Counsel Parker, Resolution 2024 Public Tax Auction Reserve Bids 10.1, be resolved that City Council, number one, establish the terms and conditions outlined in attachment one, and number two, set the reserve bids for each parcel of land and designated manufactured home, as detailed in attachment two, to offer for, excuse me, offer for sale at the public tax, tax auction scheduled for Thursday, April 4th, 2024, at 11:00 a.m. in the Culver City Meeting Room at City Hall. And I will entertain questions. I do have one, and I'm sure through the city manager. Each and every year, we have this come up, and how often, or should I say, maybe in the last few years, have we actually had a property go to, go to, to auction? Yes?
I'll let Ms. Bogart speak to this one.
Hi, thank you. Is this on?
Yes.
Hi, great question. So often, we don't have too many properties that actually make it all the way to auction. We are quite successful in usually collecting or getting them signed up on a tap agreement. And quite often, it happens like the hour before auction. So-
So last year, did we have any?
No, we had zero. We were able to cancel auction last year. The year before, we had one. It was a mobile home that went. It did not sell, but the park manager, we just got notified, the park manager has actually got possession of it. And so, we're clear. We're free and clear right now at the moment.
Can you tell me how many are up this year currently?
Currently, what was just submitted to the Herald this morning is one mobile home and 10 properties. Out of that 10, one is a commercial and nine are residential.
And you, and you will continue to work with them, obviously? It's a-
Oh, yes, yes.
Right to that last hour, as you will, and hopefully, we do not have any, because it's, nothing is, I know with, with the times that we have, it's not the best to be able to stand before you and not have those funds. So I'm glad you're working with the community on that. Any further questions? If not, it was a resolution by Counselor Parker.
I just, I think your question's actually was part of my debate in regards to, we do this on an annual basis, legislation and all that. And as stated, usually everything gets all cleared up before that date, and there's the adocation where a place may go up for auction. So I've just asked for council support.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? I think we're good. Unanimous. Now we'll move to city council updates. Is there any updates? Yes, Counsel Crowson?
Thank you. I just wanted to update that about two weeks ago, there was a meeting between the county and the city, our intermunicipal meeting. And the two groups are working on a very high level document, a memorandum of understanding, that we will, will work together on regional economic matters. Just so, just so my colleagues know to expect that to come forward, administration between the two groups will decide when to bring that forward. But I just didn't want it to hit the, you know, agenda, and for none of you to have heard that it is coming.
Thank you very much for that update, Counsel Crowson. Any further updates? Seeing none, we'll move to closed meeting resolutions, starting off with, from Counsel Crowson, ratification of representatives to boards, commissions, and committees, 14.1. Be resolved that City Council ratify the following representatives to the Economic Development Lethbridge Board of Directors in accordance with the 2016 memorandum of understanding between the city of Lethbridge and Economic Development Lethbridge for a two-year term effective immediately. Number one, Shannon Frank for environment sector, and number two, Sampa Walguma multicultural sector. And further be resolved, that City Council direct the closed meeting documents and discussions with respect to the ratification of representatives to boards, commissions, and committees remain confidential pursuant to section 17, harmful to private, personal privacy, 19 confidential evaluations, 23 local public body confidences, and 24 advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Counsel Crowson?
So you'll notice that this is a ratification. Economic Development does the work of interviewing people and of bringing in the appointments, and they make the decision of who they wish to recommend to us, and we have the point, have the responsibility then to ratify this. So I hope my colleagues will support this.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? One opposed? All right. And we have, I have a resolution from Counselor Crowson as well. Closed meeting intermunicipal committee update, 14.2. Be resolved that City Council direct at the closed meeting discussions with respect to the intermunicipal committee update remain confidential pursuant to section 21, harmful to intergovernmental relations, and 24 advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Counsel Crowson?
Call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned till March 26th.